Good evening, everyone.
Welcome to tonight's study session. It's five forty-five. We'll begin this study session. And Mr. Teis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this is on.
You're on. We can hear you.
Members of council. So this evening, I wanted to take a little time to bring the city council up to date on our current general plan. As you are probably aware, the state statute requires that cities update and reapprove their general plan every ten years. So in Casa Grande's case, our 2020 plan, as we call it, was approved by city council and by the voters in two thousand nine. So it's time to revise and reaffirm and approve a general plan. As you'll see, we've been working on this project diligently for about the last nine months. It's been a real collaborative effort between planning staff, our consultant, primary consultant, planette with Leslie Dornfeld, and Leslie's here in the audience this evening, along with her sub consultants of AECom, and our technical advisory committee and our steering forum, and also the general public input that we've received. So it's been a real collaborative effort. Everyone has contributed. We're currently at the sixty-day review stage, which means that the draft of the plan is completed, and it's been distributed out to various agencies and organizations for a formal sixty-day public review. I know that each of you received an email with a link to the electronic version of it, I think back in September, as well as a hard copy. So hopefully, I know that you probably have all read it and know everything in the plan, but I thought this evening I'd take a few minutes just to talk about some of the differences between our current general plan and our newly proposed general plan. As you can see on the list, these are some of the processes that the plan has gone through, starting way back in May with the city council's adoption of a public participation plan that laid out the process we were going to use for soliciting public input into the plan. We were lucky enough to have a large public kickoff meeting in January before the COVID restrictions hit, and it was well, well-attended. The timing was really good because we could not do that today. The, we have previously briefed the planning commission early on in the process and briefed city council early on back in March. We reviewed this with the youth commission. We put up a general plan website that allowed the public to view our progress as well as to make input along the ways. I mentioned the technical advisory committee. They did meet eleven times, and the steering forum met twelve times through this process. The technical advisory committee was represented by every city, every city department. You can see the list on the, on the screen, as well as various other public agencies and organizations. They have some role to play in planning and development in Casa Grande. This, this group worked very hard on providing lots of technical information that helped inform the plan, and various members of this, these committee actually wrote elements of the plan, such as the transportation element and other technical input. We also had a steering forum that was, that you appointed, a kind of, sort of a broad-based community group that represented various stakeholders in the community. The, the mayor chaired that group. Councilman Powell was a member of the group as well. So we had council representatives and representatives of every major stakeholder group that we could identify in the community. The general plan has various elements, and we're going to talk about some of those and some of the contents of those elements, but is, you know, one of the things that are sort of the foundation of the plan is the land use element. It's the, probably the section, the element that we use and Planning Office on a daily basis, planning commission uses, and city council uses on a regular basis to make land use decisions and help to guide us. So you can see the various land use categories that are in this new general plan. They're all the same as the existing categories with the exception, with two exceptions. One is we've introduced the new downtown land use category, and we'll be talking about that a little bit more, and we've combined the rural and agriculture categories into the rural. This element does contain a land use map, also a section on accommodating growth, and a section on future annexations that we should be thinking about. This is the land use map itself. The, you can see the new downtown in the middle. That's the new downtown core. There's a blow up that, of that later in the presentation. I'll be talking about that a little bit more. And there's also an expansion of the industrial area that I'll be talking about as well. So those are the most significant changes to the land use map. In a minute, you're going to see that the amount of land in each of these categories stayed essentially the same. The distribution was changed a little bit based on appropriate decisions on what the appropriate land uses should be and are today. The other elements in the general plan are listed here. All of these are mandatory elements under the state statute, with the exception of economic development and historic preservation. Those two elements are optional elements. They were in our prior general plan, and it was decided to continue to include those in this general plan as they're important to the community. The historic preservation element was essentially developed by the Historic Preservation Commission, and economic development was driven significantly by our Economic Development Department. This general plan is broken up into three general themes. One called growing economy, the other is enhancing quality of life, and the other is environmental sustainability. There are different elements that we've grouped under those, these themes. You can see those on the, on the screen that, that relate to one another. The, the name of the plan, the branding of it, if you will, was a growing horizon, which really relates back to the growing economy and of Casa Grande. When we started this process, there's a lot of discussion about what changes might need to be made to the existing 2020 general plan, and I think the general consensus was that the existing general plan was, had, was fundamentally sound. It was a good plan, had good bones, but it needed some revisions around the edges to address some emerging community issues that weren't necessarily significant issues when the 2020 plan was created. And those issues are listed here. The first is really that we have limited water resources to support growth and development. How is that going to change how we're planning our community? The desire to promote infill vacant land that could be easily served by existing infrastructure and city services. The need to expand housing choices to accommodate all levels, all income levels and demographics. The desire to bring new activity and development into the downtown area and to drive growth through the creation of new quality commercial industrial development as well as well-paying job. So with these community issues, the, we created what are known as the founding principles for the plan. These, they kind of morphed into these founding principles that helped really drive what the plan was going to be and where it was going to go. They are, I'm going to talk about some of these a little bit more detail and further and later on in the presentation, so I won't go into those in detail, but I will say that pretty much every change that was made to the general plan was made to implement one of these founding principles. And I'm pretty, I think we discussed these early on in the process because they were all kind of formulated before we really delved into rewriting the plan. So a synopsis maybe of the major changes between the 2020 and 2030 plans are, includes an evaluation of growth projections relative to water resource availability. We're going to talk about that in some detail in a moment. We created a new downtown land use category in an effort to facilitate downtown development. That kind of keyed off the, the urban land use institute charrette we had downtown and that, that, that discussion where many of those same concepts that that technical team suggested have now been incorporated into the plan. To provide, we've provided additional opportunities for middle-density housing in the land use category to improve housing choices. In the planning jargon, this is called the missing middle. It's nationwide, there's a lack of medium-density housing, and we're going to talk about that a little bit. Also, we combined the rural and agriculture land uses into one land use category because the, the vision between those is essentially the same, and I, I think it just makes more sense to have one large category versus two. We had to expand the amount of land in the manufacturing and industrial land use category. I'll talk about that a little bit later, but we, we realized that we only had enough land currently identified in manufacturing and land use to meet our need for about the next thirty years, and you really want to have more land available that you need, and so we had to increase that. There should be no surprise, given the amount of manufacturing and industrial development we've been doing over the last, you know, eight to five years. And lastly, we consolidated the growth areas from four into two. This pie chart shows you the amount of land in each of those land use categories in the 2020 plan versus the 2030. I mentioned that there really was not much change in the amount of land. This, this part chart sort of brings home that point. A little bit of reduction in neighborhoods, increase in the rural and ag, the, a little bit of, of increase in the community corridor, but not, overall, not much real change. Just so you know, the, this represents the planning area, the, excuse me, this represents the, the city limits. There, the city limits has a hundred square miles. The planning area has two hundred square miles, so the distribution looks different if I looked at the planning area, because that's the area outside of the city. There's much more rural in the planning area. There's like forty-six percent is rural. So, but this is the city limits itself. So the first guiding principle, I just want to talk a little bit about, was to link all land use decisions to the known available water resources to ensure long-term viability and sustainability for all growth and development. The actual statute for general plans requires a water resource element that we provide one, and it specifically requires us to look at three aspects of water resource. First, to identify the known legally and physically available water that in both surface, groundwater, and effluent supplies that we have available. Two, to look at how much water we need to accommodate our growth projections. And lastly, to look at that relationship of the water resource needed to meet our, to serve our growth projections, our projected growth, and how much we have available, and if there's a gap between those two numbers, to look at how we can close that gap, how we can deal with it. So that's the statute requirement, and hopefully, I think we did a pretty good job of looking at all three of those. So the first thing we really looked at is, well, how much water are we really using in Casa Grande? And so Arizona Water, who's the primary water provider for us, shared their data to me that how much water they've been serving to Casa Grande over the last ten years. If you look at this graph, it's about fifteen thousand acre feet per year for, for the last nine or ten years. The really interesting thing about this graph is that our population has actually increased twelve percent during that same time. I would have assumed to see the water usage increase about by twelve percent, but it in fact hasn't. It's been pretty, pretty stamp, pretty level, right? Pretty constant. So the, the reason that I believe that that's occurred is because we're being better at conserving water, and both our businesses and our residents are using less water per capita than they had prior over the time period. So that's a really good trend, and I guess we need to continue to, to focus on that trend and to emphasize it. You're going to see that our population projection for the next thirty years is to essentially double our population from sixty thousand to about a hundred and twenty thousand. Those are the numbers that, that were generated by the state demographers office. We actually had two other sources of population projection, one done by my office, and as well, another one done by the Maricopa Area Council of Governments, and all three projections were essentially very close together, and so we decided as a group to use the state demographer. So if you think about the population doubling over the next thirty years, logic would tell us that our water consumption, unless we intervene in some way, is going to also double. And so you would see it's going to go from fifteen thousand acre feet to thirty thousand acre feet. That's essentially how much water that we need to support our growth. You're going to also see that one of our goals in the, in this element is to actually try to increase conservation and reduce that consumption by about fifteen percent per capita over the next, over the time period here, to continue those conservation efforts to, to drive the water usage per person in households and by businesses down to use less water. We still are going to be needing about twenty-five thousand acre feet per year by twenty fifty. So what's, what's, some of the more details on what's driving that water usage is, the biggest component of water usage is residential, specifically single-family homes. That's the biggest user of water. This chart tells us that if we are going to increase our population, basically double it, we are going to essentially double the number of housing units that we have in the community. Today, we have about twenty-two thousand, a little over twenty-two thousand housing units, and by twenty thirty, we're going to have close to forty-five thousand. So we're going to essentially double the number of housing units over the next thirty years. So if we're going to have about population growth for the next thirty years, it's about sixty-one thousand. It's essentially doubling what we have today. It's about where we are. We're going to need about twenty-two thousand new dwelling units to support that additional population. Today, I'm going to tell you that about ninety percent of, eighty-five to ninety percent of our new dwelling units are single-family detached. As you probably know, that's, you have lots of single-family detached homes being constructed in the community. You have some manufactured home parks being constructed, and you have very few apartments being constructed. Our housing element and our housing expert tells us, Rick Elliott from Pollock and Company tells us that really what we should be having is more of a, of a, of a ratio of about seventy percent single-family, fifteen percent apartments, townhomes, condos, and fifteen percent manufactured homes and park models. So the trend of, of, of so much single-family, we think, will be slowly changed with the introduction of more apartments, condos, townhomes. We think manufactured home parks won't increase. They're technically about fifteen percent of the total today, but the real growth will be in apartments, condos, and townhomes. So if you look at the additional, at twenty-two thousand new dwelling units, and if you assume seventy percent of them need to be single-family homes, you come up with the number that you need about fifteen thousand or so new single-family homes to accommodate the growth over the next thirty years. And the addition, the remainder of the units, sixty-six hundred, will be met by apartment units, manufactured homes, condos, townhomes. So that's what we need to know. Do we have enough water to support fifteen thousand new single-family homes and sixty-six hundred new apartments and condos?
Are we, are we still on water?
Yes, we're on water. So to answer that question, we looked at how many certificates of assured water supply do we have out there that have been issued and not used? So we went into the ADWR database. We, we were able to obtain information on all of the certificates of assured water supply that have been issued, and, and then we looked at the vacant lots, and we mapped where they are, and here's what we found. You can see that in gen, we have about twenty-one thousand eight hundred vacant lots with certificates of assured water supply. The interesting thing about that is that the majority of those certificates are associated with preliminary plats. We have final plats which are being built on today, but the Arizona Department of Water Resources issued certificates of assured water supply for preliminary plats as well. So that's, so we have a lot of preliminary plats that have come through, partially through the system. They have to come back to council's final plats and get approval. The other thing that we found out that was interesting that I really didn't know is that there's over three thousand condo sites that have, have certificates of assured water supply. So, and those are distributed throughout the community too, in different locations. So in fact, we can build new townhomes and condos and sell them because they do have certificates of assured water supply. So our summary of that data was that Casa Grande in fact does have enough vacant lots approved with cause to meet the projected population growth in single-family home construction and town, townhome and condo construction over the next twenty to thirty years. The reason why it's twenty to thirty is all depends on how many, you know, we're, units we're building per year. If I stood here making this presentation six months ago, I would tell you that we're doing, you know, five hundred to seven fifty homes per year. Today, I'm going to tell you that we're going to do between a thousand and twelve hundred per year. So the rate of growth has really increased over the last, you know, six months. Whether or not that's sustainable, I don't know, but so, but somewhere between twenty and thirty years, we have enough supply of vacant lots with assured water supply certificates to meet our demand. What that also tells me though is that we need to be thinking in the future about what, how we, what do we do to sustain growth and development beyond that timeframe? Because it's likely that, you know, whether or not ADWR decides that there's actually more water in the basin than, than they think there is today, that's an unknown. I, if I had to guess, I'm going to guess that they're not going to reverse their position. So what does that mean we need to do? We need to reduce our reliance on groundwater. We need to invest in sustainable water supplies, and we need to use the water that we have more efficiently. The water resource element of the general plan goes into specific goals and, and action steps that implements those premises. Again, to implement water conservation measures, to reduce outdoor use of water, that's the big user, is actually outdoor irrigation, specifically with single-family homes. To reduce the daily water per capita by fifteen percent, to use, maximize the use of effluent as an alternative to groundwater and appropriate applications, and to develop additional water supplies to reduce the dependency on groundwater from the Pino A M A. Mayor, is it okay if I just continue and take questions and comments at the end?
Can you write them down?
Uh, I've written them down.
Okay.
All right, now that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, no, if that's what you're doing.
It's a long presentation. I want to make sure I get through it and give you all the information there.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. So the other guiding principle that we used in the development of the plan was to encourage development in Casa Grande's downtown, to strengthen existing businesses and add further vitality to the downtown area. So we created a series of goals and action steps that we thought that would actually implement that strategy. One of them, and I think it's a really big one, is to focus on residential development opportunities and to provide, to provide alternative urban living choice. So if you think about the downtown, the downtown is one of those few areas of the city where people can actually live and, and walk to work in the industrial area, ride their bike to work in the industrial area, the industrial area, and all the jobs that we're creating in the industrial area are probably, you know, two, two miles or so from the downtown. It's a pretty short commute. Could work well with transit as well. The downtown has a grocery store and many other businesses that can support folks who are living downtown, and an introduction of residential, new residential in the downtown area would, you know, do nothing but strengthen those kinds of businesses. The downtown does have some challenges to development, specifically our current landscape, stormwater management, parking codes don't do a very good job of acknowledging the unique nature of downtown, and so we need to revise those codes to just, you know, not treat downtown like it's normal greenfield suburban kind of development, but it's more urban. So, and, and every community does that. We just haven't really done that in Casa Grande, distinguish the downtown development from other development. One of the goals is to develop a strategy for downtown development, redevelopment, and adaptive reuse, create really strong people-first street design that emphasizes sidewalks and interface between the public and the stores and, you know, eating areas and alternative transportation as well. And lastly, to preserve and adapt existing structures and historic assets that tie downtown to its agricultural and railroad routes. We have a, a very interesting downtown, has a lot of history to it. We don't want to lose that, but we want to try to bring more vibrancy and development activity there. So one of the ways that we, this plan tries to do that was by creating a new downtown land use category. As we created the new downtown land use category, and I'm going to tell you, we looked really closely at both Chandler's Downtown and the Gilbert Downtown and the transformation that they've gone through in the last, you know, ten years, and we, we thought that that was a really good success stories, frankly. But as we looked at our downtown, one of the things that came to mind was that really there's not, very little vacant land to develop in our downtown area. That meant that development was going to have to either tear down existing buildings and build new, or just to rehab and renovate existing structures. So what this plan did though was to try to add some vacant ground to the downtown. So the downtown core, as you can see here, has been expanded to the west and to the south along both, basically Chu Chu Highway as an entry to the downtown from the south and to Gila Ben. The addition of that vacant land to the downtown allows for the development of new development in downtown, whether it be residential or commercial, but we could get some new construction to complement the existing historic and downtown fabric that we have today. Another guiding principle was to increase the range of housing choices and products available to all sectors of the Casa Grande community. I mentioned to you that, you know, today, the, today, we, most of our housing development is single-family detached, like the picture on the left. We do have some multifamily, like the picture on the right, but we don't have much of this middle-density housing, which is the picture in the middle, which is kind of townhomes, condos. Some of it is actually single-family detached at a little higher density where people will rent, some ownership, some rental, a combination of both. Going to go back one slide here. So we developed a series of goals to try to achieve the, the vision of increasing housing choices, to provide a variety of housing choices for all income levels, generations, household demographics, to encourage variety in neighborhood design and development. to encourage higher density in areas designated as the downtown core. We talked about putting more housing in the downtown core, but also in our community corridor and actually, and even in our commerce and business land use categories. To be sure though, that we are, when approving new developments, that we ensure compatibility of our new higher-density developments when they're adjacent to residential areas. We've been doing that, as if you recall, as we have lots of zone changes. We impose conditions of record, for example, to limit height, increase landscape buffers, those kinds of things when we have used-to-use compatibility issues. The code talks about formalizing that a little more. To increase the supply of affordable and attainable housing, increase homeownership opportunities for low-income residents, and to strive to meet the needs of senior citizens and other special need populations. All really good goals. So, how we did that, within the context of the plan itself, is we actually modified the neighborhood's land use category to allow the development of medium-density housing with a max ten DU's per acre, as well as the current higher-density housing, which is twenty DU's per acre. So today, we allow higher-density housing in our neighborhoods under certain restrictive criteria. The proposal is to also, in addition to the higher density, to allow medium-density housing. Max size of the site is twenty-five acres. And the medium and high-density residential components of the neighborhood area cannot constitute more than twenty percent of the area, which means it's still eighty percent single-family, predominantly single-family, by introducing a few more choices into the neighborhoods category. In addition to the neighborhoods, to allow housing in the downtown area, we talked about that, to modify our community corridor land use category to allow housing, residential housing with twenty-five DU's per acre, a little bit higher density, and to allow multifamily housing in the commerce and business category as well, at even a little bit higher density. They would allow us, introducing the, those kinds of housing into our commercial corridor, excuse me, our community corridor and our commerce and business allows those areas to become more like mixed use, sort of like the downtown. And so there would be mix, mixing of apartments with, with residential. You might think, you know, the promenade, right? Could you build an apartment complex in the promenade? Yes, you probably could. And it probably would be successful and it probably would work quite well. Our current codes might not allow that, our current general plan might not allow that. Rural heritage was another guiding principle to honor and preserve the rural and agricultural heritage of Casa Grande while allowing urbanization to occur in appropriate locations. So we acknowledge the rural heritage and how that is very important to Casa Grande and needs to continue. We do have a series of goals related to rural preservation. You can see those on the, on the screen. Actually, we had a lot of goals for preserving rural character. I think the, and many of those were very similar to the goals that we have today in our current general plan. The, the one that's a little different was to, the second one, which is to explore the city's potential and capacity for solar industry development. You can see the, the slide on the left which shows you a, a solar field in basically a rural or agricultural area. Today, on our current general plan, so, utility-level solar fields like this, whether or not they're PV or, or wind turbines, are restricted to our industrial areas. The thought process was, that's really not a good use of industrial land that has water and wastewater infrastructure because these are low infrastructure users. The infrastructure they really need is, is high-power, high-voltage electrical transmission lines. So we thought that it's a good use to potentially allow in the rural category. We would, of course, through the public process and zoning, make sure that there was a compatibility. But from an infrastructure standpoint, it seemed like it's a good potential alternative use for some of the rural land, especially that, that has no water rights, that's fallow and cannot be developed for actual farming or agricultural production. So we combined the rural and ag categories into one. I mentioned that that category represents about seven percent of the land within the city limits, but represents forty-six percent of the land within the planning area boundary. The land uses that might occur in that rural include low-density residential development, like one, at one DU per acre, maximum density. As I think about that, I think about the development that's east of the interstate, north of McCartney Road, those kinds of low-density residential developments. And, and even lower. Under, you don't need, for example, certificate of assured water supply for a parcel that's over thirty-six acres. So you can certainly do thirty-six acre parcels for residential development. The, also, it allows farming and ranching both for personal and commercial, just like it does today. And the new one, which we've introduced, is the potential for utility-level solar. Another guiding principle is that community growth should be driven by high-paying quality jobs associated with industrial, corporate office, professional service, financial service, research and development, and other similar developments. You know, I think we, we've done a great job as of late with our economic development activities. It seems to be the major driver of growth and development in this community versus being a bedroom community. I think it really sets Casa Grande apart from a lot of other communities to sort of grow your own jobs and grow your own growth. This, this plan suggests that we should continue doing that. Has a series of, of goals to try to continue with that trend. I think, and we actually looked at the, both the, the economic development strategic plan and the city council strategic plan in developing many of these, of these goals. In addition to the industrial development, there's a, there's a guiding principle to support our position as the commercial center of Pinale County. We are, are the commercial center of Pinale County. And we, we, the plan advocates for that to continue. In terms of manufacturing and industrial land use, I did mention that we, it did expand that area. What we found is that, we, what we did is we looked at how much land we had currently in the city in each land use category. And then we projected out thirty years, how much land we would need in that category based on our current trends and, and the data that we had available to us. And what it showed us in the manufacturing and industry category was that at the end of thirty years, we would have consumed all our manufacturing and industry classified property. So, that's within the city. So that showed us that there was a need to expand that amount of land. There really was not much room for expansion of that within the city itself. So we looked at expansion into the planning area, which of course, that's what the planning area is for, is to allow, excuse me, future growth. So we expanded it south of, of the Gila Bend Highway. We've extended it south of Selma down towards the eight and on the, a little bit to the east and south as well of the current industrial area. It's all contiguous to the existing industrial area. And it expands at the, into the area that needs to be annexed. It's in our planning area. It would need to be annexed. But it all looks to be able to have infrastructure provided to it with, relatively easily. One of the other emerging community issues that I talked about was the, the fact that we needed to, to do more infill. As this area photo shows, we have lots of little vacant sites throughout the community. This is one around Treacle and, and, and.
It's by Lowe's.
Oh, it's at Lowe's, sorry, Mayor.
That's Pier.
Yeah, Pier. Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Pier and, and Florence.
Lowe's is in the middle there.
So, so, we have lots of vac, vacant infill sites that have infrastructure, all the infrastructure adjacent to them for development. The road infrastructure, the water, the sewer. It makes perfect sense from a city fiscal standpoint to encourage development of these sites because it costs us very little additional increment to provide those services to those. And so it's beneficial to the city. It's beneficial to developers because they have less development cost. So we created a series of goals to help facilitate infill, encourage and promote developers to utilize infill sites, direct growth to areas which provide the most sustainable, efficient, cost-effective use of infrastructure. And this one is on Treacle, this photo here. And to, maybe most importantly, to consider revision of the impact fee structure to encourage infill development that requires little or no extension of infrastructure or city services. The state law actually allows us to do, do that. We haven't done that, but I think that's something we need to consider to help try to promote infill development as well. We also looked at redevelopment to improve neighborhood appearance, living conditions, overall quality of life in the city's older neighborhoods through the preservation and revitalization of residential and commercial areas. I think the Casa Grande Mall is a perfect example of that. To bring new life to that, it, it probably needs some new land uses. We've actually talked to the owner of that about maybe, you know, introducing apartments there, for example, and, and some other land uses. But we need to think creatively as we redevelop, to redevelop some of those areas. We do have a series of goals and action steps. You can see there, one is, you know, to revitalize commercial developments in older neighborhoods. And on the left, you can see a really, a good success story of a renovation of a historic and older building to the Landmarks Event Center. And on the, on the right, excuse me, and on the left, you can see a building that has a lot of potential for renovation and adaptive reuse, which is the Casa Grande Hotel owned by us. We did map out the neighborhood strategy areas and redevelopment areas. You can see them there. We added the one that's on Florence. That's not one that we had identified before that does pick up the Casa Grande Mall and some of the other developments along Florence that really should be our potential for, for reuse and renovation. And we've mapped the opportunity zones that provide federal tax incentives for development as well. Another guiding principle is create a sense of arrival at our major entryways, cultivate a unique sense of place throughout the community. One of the ways we are advocating that we do that is through our community corridor land use category, which creates little development nodes, mixed-use areas. And so we've strategically put those at the entryways, various entryways, including this one on North Pinale, as well as in our corridors, not only Pinale, Florence, but also some of Cottonwood and some of Treacle to try to facilitate a certain type of development, our character in those areas. You could see the goals here that we, that we're looking at. Those are the ones I discussed with you in those areas. We have some, two guiding principles regarding managing growth. One's to ensure that essential infrastructure is available concurrent with new development. And two, to plan for growth that allows the city to provide urban services in an efficient and fiscally responsible manner. Today's general plan has four growth areas. We're not introducing a new concept here with growth areas. We have four today, but the new general plan takes it down to two. Interesting thing about, we have phase one and phase two. Phase one basically has the ability to, either has infrastructure available to it or can be readily be brought to it. The interesting thing about phase one is phase one area has enough vacant land to more than accommodate all the growth we need in the next thirty years. There's that much vacant land in phase one. Probably half of phase one's still vacant after thirty years.
That's where all the certificates of assured water are too, right, Paul?
Yes. And so, there you go. Nice segue, Mayor. Thank you. This, the other thing in phase one is when we mapped all those subdivisions that have assured water, certificates of assured water, every one of them is in phase one. We made sure of that. And so that's where the, that's where the residential growth is going to occur until something different happens with how we allocate water in the, in the state. We also looked at multimodal transportation. Duane Atel, our traffic engineer, along with his consultants from Wilson and Company, essentially wrote this element for us. Did a nice job, but the guiding principles to foster a land use pattern that can be served by a variety of transportation modes such as walking, bicycling, autonomous vehicles, ma, and mass transit, and normal vehicles. Could see some, some photos here of some of the things that, you know, we really want to focus a little bit more on multimodal to provide, sort of just like in housing, additional housing choices, additional transportation choices, same kind of concept. Because there's not a one-size-fits-all in the community. We do have the planned roadway network that was updated and that comes out of our small area transportation plan. One of the things that was decided not to put on this map was the I-11 corridor because that preferred corridor has not yet been determined by ADA as it passes through Casa Grande, although we, we're still advocating for the Montgomery Road alignment to be used. And it is shown as an expressway here. The I-11 corridor is not specifically called out. We're required to look at transit as part of the general plan. And so we incorporated the currently approved or adopted transit network that council recently was, was briefed on and adopted. So that's in there. We also need to include trails and bicycle network. We did use our existing trails plan and that's in here. Well, we modified it slightly to identify the trail corridors that we have constructed since the last general plan. But we still have a lot of work to do. So that takes me to what happens from here. So, tonight, I'm here to listen, after being briefed, listen to your comments and input. Take those to, to back to the drawing board if we need to. Tomorrow night, we're actually doing a, essentially the same briefing to the general public on, on both Zoom meeting, YouTube and Facebook Live and Channel 11. So we're doing it for three hours tomorrow night. And so we're going to try to brief the general public. It's kind of a challenge in these days with COVID, with social distancing, but we're going to use the online avenues to brief the public, take input and, and comments as well. The plan is going back to the steering forum to talk to the steering forum about all the changes that might have been made between this draft and the final draft and the input we received. We're going to go to Planning Commission with a special meeting on November nineteenth that we're hopefully going to hold at the Community Rec Center. It's required to be a public meeting by state statute. And the Planning Commission is required to hold two public hearings at two different locations. So, the second Planning Commission public hearing would be here at their, in this room on December third, at their normal meeting, at what time the Planning Commission would vote, on what recommendation to forward to city council. City council would hold a public hearing on the plan on December twenty-first. And then on January fourth, you would consider it for formal adoption and scheduling for the public vote. By law, the public vote has to occur about a hundred and twenty days after your, 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 your decision. So the public vote would be scheduled for a special election on May eighteenth, which probably would be Malin election. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mary?
I, I have like about three and I'll try and do. First of all, I love the term attainable housing. I hadn't heard that before. That's a great, that's a great term. I love the idea that we're looking at rural heritage in the plan. That's, that's a huge. Really want to beef up our gateways. That's our, you know, that's the first look at our community. And those looked really nice out there when they were first constructed, but I think we need something like four times that size. To, the question is, first question is, you speak of metal density. Two, the question is, first question is, you speak of middle density, can you give me a little bit of a definition on middle density?
Sure. First off, in terms of just density itself, our single-family detached is built up to about four-point-five DUs per acre. So that's what our single-family detached is built at. That, that equates to lot sizes that are like six thousand feet, square feet and larger. So middle density by definition is something between four-point-five DUs per acre and ten DUs per acre. So that's the actual density range. Now what does that product look like? It can look like lots of different things. It can look like a, build-for-rent projects, which is the single-family homes that are built on a big, one lot owned by one person, one developer, and they're not built for sale, they're built just to be rentals as alternative to renting apartments. In fact, you, you know, you will see those in the near future, I'm sure, because there's developers, you know, discussing, constructing them in Casa Grande. But our code doesn't really provide very many good sites for where they, that might happen. Middle-density housing may be, may be townhomes. You know, maybe, you know, townhomes that are for sale, that are attached units. They could be single-story townhomes, they could be two-story townhomes. You know, we do have some historical townhome developments that, in Casa Grande, like the Tierra Palmas kind of thing, which is kind of middle-density. That is middle-density, Tierra Palmas, if you think about it. And it's kind of, was really created for its day, but we haven't built anything like that recently. So, we would be encouraging attached, could be detached with smaller lots, more common area for both ownership and for rental.
And then as far as, when you talk about, you had the numbers for detached and then you had apartments and then park models. Under the apartment condo townhouse, would that include also the semi-detached? You had shown us a product a few months ago that was, where it was like maybe two units with a common wall.
Yes, it would. That would be in the middle-density housing, yes, absolutely.
And then I like your idea of restructuring the fee schedule to encourage that infill. I think that would make a huge difference. In fact, I think that would attract local investment. I think we have people in our town or surrounding areas that if we did that, they would definitely look at maybe doing something, getting involved in something like that. So, that would be something.
Okay, thanks. Matt?
Yeah, thanks. I'm not gonna echo a lot of what Councilman Carson said, it was great. But the water, now I've heard of Mr. Powell, too, he knows a lot about it. We went through this recently with a piece of land where we could only do either apartments or, or, you know, mobile home, manufactured home subdivision. And we don't have much control over that as a city, right? Because that's a state, a state thing. So, we're gonna push people towards where we have water. Because if someone owns a piece of land and they want to develop it, they're very limited if they don't have any water. And I've heard of a couple more pieces in town recently that don't have the certificate of assured water. So, just to be clear, it's not the city that controls that part of it, that's the state.
You're right, Councilman Herman, it is the state. It's their requirement for new subdivisions, any subdivision to have a certificate of assured water supply. All of those in Casa Grande have, no new ones have been issued for four years, right? So we, it is, we have what we have right now. And it's twenty-one thousand of them, which is great. But, there's lots of vacant parcels out there that are general plan for neighborhoods and residential development that don't have them. And so one of our challenges is going to be, what do we do with that property? Because there's a lot of it. When I mentioned that, you know, in thirty years, only half of that phase one area is gonna develop, that's why some of that can't develop residentially unless we approve it for apartments, you know, rental product of some type or, or commercial, right, or industrial. So that is a big challenge.
Yeah, that's part of the plan, is the percentages, which I liked that good breakdown, but we can't put all mobile home parks are all, you know, rental properties. So, thank you for bringing that up. And when you did the downtown development area and you extended it down south, I would say mostly, did you speak with the landowners down there about that?
We haven't spoken to the landowners, no.
Okay.
In, in general, we, you know, because first off, their current zoning doesn't change, right? So we're not taking away any development rights they might have. So they get to develop under their current zoning if that's what they want to do. This really just looks at future, future zoning changes, right?
Okay. Yeah, it gives them more options, right, Paul?
I'd say in generally, it definitely gives them more options, yes. And if you think about it, again, talking about the gateway, that's an important gateway coming in there. And to create an entryway to our downtown from that area, I think would be really beneficial.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, I just wondered, make sure, but that's a good point, Mayor. It expands their opportunities rather than. And then the solar on the non-water ground in rural areas, because I remember Governor Brewer came here years ago and she wanted us to be the solar capital of Arizona. And that doesn't create long-term jobs, just construction jobs. But if we have land without water and someone wants an opportunity in that land, that's a great, you know, it's not a bad option for them because we're limited. And it is important, I'd like to point for Casa Grande to be the manufacturing industrial hub of Panal County and I'm glad we identified that in, in this plan. And lastly, I am gonna repeat something that Mary said because I have experience with this recently, is I really like the idea of reducing the impact fees or helping somehow with the infill areas because that has sunk, we're canceling many small projects on those infills because if you have to put a thirty thousand dollar water line or twelve thousand dollar or something, I mean, that makes it almost impossible for a small lot like that. But that's a great way that we have that we can encourage those. So I, thank you for that. And that's all, thank you.
Just a clarification, on the downtown area that we talked about extending, isn't that property currently owned by the city? I believe that there was, right?
Yes, I'll go back to that map. All the stuff that we own south of the tracks is in that area, right? The little stuff that, that block we own north of the church on, on Second is in that area. So, yes, some of that is owned by city. Go back to, whoop, I guess it's back a few slides here.
I think that other one showed it too, Paul. I think you went by it.
Did I?
Yeah.
You know, and actually, don't we have an inventory list?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I thought that was part of that inventory list.
There is a big inventory list.
I think it was the one of the, of the down, it had, you had.
There it is.
There it is, there you go.
It's a long presentation, I know. There's fifty-nine slides.
It's this thick.
Yep. Okay.
Whenever somebody goes. So which pieces of, are city-owned there?
Uh, the stuff on the other side of the tracks, you know, in the, in the south.
There's stuff on the north side of the tracks, too.
And then a little block on the north side of the tracks.
And on Second Street, okay.
Yeah.
And I was talking about, you know, on the other side of the tracks, I thought we had several on that inventory.
Well, you've got the Shaughnessy House, you've got the Mission, you've got all that property that's south of those two pieces of property, plus all the park, plus the.
And you have East of there, too.
Plus you have the, the, the NOC center there with the dog.
And, and we have the auditorium.
Animal control.
Is in there. You can see we went north of Florence, too, I didn't talk about that. So this would be in the downtown, auditorium.
Yeah, the auditorium.
Right, and I was thinking more on the other, other side of the tracks, okay, thank you.
We own all that blighted stuff down there. It's getting better, though, I will say.
New road, too.
Mr. Powell's keeping us on track on that.
Mr. Powell, you wanted to say something?
Well, Lisa had, ladies before gentlemen.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah. You know, I mean, I know it was a long presentation, but you know, Paul, I just, I'm just so impressed how you really pull in everything that we've discussed for, over the years. And, you know, I know we only do this every ten years and we talk about a lot and I, I'm pleased with the, you know, the strategic plan that the city council put together because I can see he's incorporated a lot of that into this. Or not he, but, but the committee and I know Mayor, you're involved too, and, and Dick. But, you know, of course, I, you know, love the, you know, the expansion of the commercial and industrial areas. It just seemed to flow perfectly. The housing options, I'm, I'm super excited about. I just think it's something that we really need. And we've been talking about it for so long and I think as we look into the future with the growth, that's, that's where it's going. And, you know, people are looking for those options. So, I was really excited to see that. Transit needs, I'm, I'm glad you did incorporate where we are and, you know, you know, what we can do in the future. And, and solar, I was glad that, that he put solar in there, that's such a big thing these days. So, I just appreciate all the hard work. I know I've been to some of the community meetings and people were really excited to, to take part of this and, and give their input. And so, it's so nice for us to get this final product. I know there's so much work that goes into it, but, I know it's not totally final yet, but, but I just, I really enjoyed and, and looked forward to, to, you know, where you were, the final product here. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Well, your committee's done a good job. You've got a good leader. And I don't know about the chairperson, but the, the, what, what, there's several areas that I, I just think were kind of inevitable. Water, we do not have enough water. We do not have enough. If you'll look at what Arizona water's getting, there, there's pumping it out of the ground. They're getting the groundwater right now all over town. The water's a big issue. And I'll just mention this, the plan that, that I had had and, and some others had presented on harvesting the floodwater from the Mississippi River, that passed unanimously except for one vote in the, in the, in the Congress, or the House at, at the state level. It had to go then to the Senate and then here came the pandemic. Everybody left, nothing happened. So we're gonna try to go after that again right after the first of the year because the, you know, that would put so much water in here. And, and it's surface water, as, as you say, is the best kind of water to have. The, so, as I say, I think the water deal is, is tenuous, but if we can get some, some water coming this direction. One of the interesting things was Tom, my buddy, Lucero.
Oh, Tom Tureen?
Yeah. Yeah, he, he thinks that's a great idea. And he said, my God, it's just common sense and, and you're taking the flooding, you're mitigating their flood damage they get every year and you're bringing water down. So, I think water is gonna continue until we get a way to bring in more water to be a problem. I think one of the words I like the best about the housing is compatible because all of us get heat when you build something that's not compatible next to somebody else's and they just don't like it. I think the compatibility is a big issue and, and it, you know, when you do a puzzle, most of the pieces around it look kind of the same. And I think when you're doing your job, it's kind of that way. You have to pick areas where everything around it is kind of the same. So, I think that was a really good thing to bring in. The downtown, the downtown's not gonna go anywhere until we do something. One of the big opportunities we missed was when the, when the at-work building was vacant. We should have gone in there and done some things to, to bring people downtown. I, I met with Richard and, and with the lady, the, from Main Street and Holly, she, she said, there's nothing here for kids or anyone else. Why would people come down here? They don't. There's not, it's not a walkable area, nobody walks down there. And, and so I think that until we can figure out some way. Now, one of the things we talked about is the new, the new Circle K's are pretty nice. And if we had one of those in the downtown, there's, there's one around the corner, but you gotta have a bodyguard with you to go around it. It's two pumps and a little scary, but beyond that, it's an hour or an hour, it's a mile trip to get gas for people. And, and that, and the food and the other things, that's something that would bring in people on a daily basis, that's what we need. The, the, I think, you know, the, the downtown is like a, a, a big mall, a big area without any anchor tenants. There's, there's, there's about two restaurants or three that, that people go to and then, and then the bashes. But we really need to work on trying to get some people in there. One of the other things is, is I don't know, Walgreens goes back and forth, but it would be a, a nice place for a Walgreens building downtown where people could use it and it's available. And those kind of things, I think Richard's gonna meet again. And then we drove across and looked at the south side. And we're gonna, we're gonna take a ride, Larry's aware of it, in a van and go through the south side. The road really just, I can't tell you how much better it looks with that nice, beautiful pavement there. And, and then it, it will extend then all the way down to Ash, which, Ash and the road's good from there on out. We're, we're not that far away from where a lot of people might want to live that are working out and, and the things that are going along on, on, yeah, on the road there, on Thornton Road. And, and so it, as I say, I think that, I think you guys have done a great job. And, and the, the one thing I, I don't understand is, is I-11. I know there's, people said it's really dangerous to stay away from it and others that say, you know, you're really missing the boat by not trying to get it laid out. Mayor, you probably know more than, than most about that, I guess. But I-11 is something that really would be helpful for us, that's for sure and, and.
It's still coming.
What's that?
It's still coming.
Yeah, but when?
And where, no, biggest, biggest question's where?
That'll be the two-billion-dollar question.
Well, that's, as I say, I think, you know, those are the kind of, I know the thing that made Casa Grande really jump out was, was I-10. And for some of us that lived here when that was going on, they had one that was out where I-10 is, one that was in closer, one that was out by Francisco Grande and the different routes that would come through. Coolidge did not want to have it. They did not, they weren't interested in that kind of traffic. So, that, that, we were kind of even pretty much with a lot of the population in Coolidge at that point in time. And that really shot us up by having that availability of, of I-10. And so I just hope that we can figure out how to get I-11, more interest in that. And as I say, the south side, I think there's a lot of opportunity over there once you get it cleaned up. And as you go and look, the city's one of the biggest problems is, and it's just, it has, has storage areas that, that need to be screened or whatever. But, as I say, that's, I think we'll get a chance to go look at that and I thank you. And I thank our, our lady that has, Leslie, I thank you for the job you've done. And John, I have, I'm glad that you keep him straight.
Bob, do you have a comment?
Yeah, actually very similar to Mr. Powell's, I had, I had a comment on the water. We, we seem like we're projecting out our growth and stating that we believe we've got adequate water based on certificates of assured water. But, but it also states in the plan that Panal AMA has stated that we're eight million acre feet short of those certificates. And that no more certificates will be issued.
There's, there's certificates and then there's, then you have analyses. So there's two different things there. And when, when you're talking about the eight million acre feet, that includes the analyses. And the analyses have no right to water right now. So, so don't go, don't get the two of them confused. The certificates of assured water are, are in that number, but if you took all the analyses out, if you took all the analyses out, you would actually not, you would not be short any water.
That like, that amount of water you're talking about, basically it's related to what, at the end of a hundred years? That's what would be left. And I, I challenge anybody to come anywhere near.
I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen in a hundred years. And I know a lot of states have shortened the time frame on water, California has.
But my, my point, my point was gonna be is that, that's a pretty fragile estimate for us to base our future on. I'm not saying it needs to be changed or anything, I'm just saying that seems like it's a moving target and that over the next ten years, and ultimately my question is, is there a chance that the process for getting certificates issued and maybe even maintained will change?
So, to answer your question, I think the first thing you need to think about is that, and you've heard this phrase before, paper water versus wet water. So paper water is your certificate, means you have the legal right to build a subdivision because ADWR has already given it to you. Whether or not there's really surf, you know, groundwater to support that, wet water to support that, that's a huge debate. People are all over the place arguing about that. So, this plan chose, chose us not to. So this plan chose, chose us not to get into that debate, and just says, look, there's legal right for 21,000 lots to have these certificates. Many of those lots are in preliminary plots, you saw those. So if it's a final plot, then you get to build it, no questions asked. If it's a preliminary plot, and you want to modify the design, ADWR reserves the right to review that, to see if they're going to allow you to transfer your approved certificate to your new preliminary plot. And they have some guidelines, and that is a little bit of a moving target, because ADWR's thinking about their position. You know, they started, say, no change, or very little change, they've moved off that, we've had one plot in Casa Grande, they had a preliminary plot, make a fairly significant change to, to their street design, and ADWR allowed that transfer to occur. No more lots. It was a, you know, zero-sum game with, with the number of lots, but there was change to the street design. So that's still under kind of evolving, if you will, what kind of change you can make to your preliminary plot. It's an ADWR rule. But for right now, these certificates are legal documents that can be implemented.
So we, we are pretty certain they're not going to issue any new ones, at least not anytime soon?
I would say that's a good bet.
And are we, are we pretty confident that they're not gonna revoke any as well?
I don't think they can legally revoke their issued certificates, that's a legal question. City Attorney could talk about that, but I don't think so.
Well, and if, and if I can, Mr. Mayor.
We could spend a week talking about water, so...
And we're gonna, we're gonna spend a fair amount of time. I think the, the Mayor and Council, and I, what I want those watching to, to, to realize and recognize is that we have a companion study that's underway in our Water Resources Plan. That is really working in somewhat of a lockstep from a timing perspective with our general plan. We anticipated that water was going to be a key element that was discussed as part of our general plan, and so quite honestly, the Mayor and Council will see at least the first phase of the water demand, demand management system, which is our conservation plan, at our next study session. The Arizona Water, we've been partnering with them on this, on this plan, the, they will be here to present that. We, we were going to originally start with our, with developing a strategy for water acquisition, for, for bringing wet water back into the Pinale AMA. But because of the interest of conservation, and as you look at this general plan, the, the emphasis on conservation in this general plan, we thought that we'd bring conservation first, and it's likely that the Mayor and Council will, will see the next several components of the Water Resources Plan and early in the new calendar year. But the primary emphasis is gonna be on our water acquisition strategy at that time. But that, that document and those planning efforts are underway concurrently with this general plan process.
Okay.
And Bob, I'd be happy to sit down with you and go over a bunch of that, all that water stuff if you want.
Okay.
To help you understand.
One of the things that's really hurting us is all of the plots, final plots that are out there have obligations removed from the aquifer, even though they're not using them. They may not use them for 10 or 20 years, but that doesn't let you use it because there's not enough, enough water. And, and that's what is, is really been brought up, we, I brought it up when we were up at, at the Capitol, is, is that there should be a, some kind of a, you can have it for so long, and if you don't use it, you lose it, as far as your water, because that, if you took, there's a lot of water that's, that will never happen, these ones that won't get built, but they've got that tied up in the aquifer, so the others shouldn't use it.
Okay. Any other questions, Bob?
My other comment was on downtown. I, I love that it's been somewhat defined, and that, that we can apply different, different tools and elements to that. I, I had one comment that I, I think as, as a council, we need to address safety and security, not because of reality, but because of perception. And I, I think eventually we're gonna have to bite the bullet and come up with a plan. I have no idea what that's gonna look like. I've, I've kind of thought about closed-circuit TV cameras and maybe park ranger-level eyes and ears that patrol the area. But I think we've, I think we've got to get rid of that perception, that, that it's not safe down there.
Yeah.
We, we all know there's a population that, that frequents the downtown area, and, and I think we've got to convince people that they're safe down there before we're gonna see any development and activity. Just, just my two cents.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, since everybody's had a chance to say something, it's my turn, and then we'll take a break, and we'll start the council meeting probably at about 5:00 after. But I just wanna say thank you, Paul, for all your, your work and staff's work, because I think you guys have done an excellent job. I've been involved in it all, all the way along. And Leslie, thank you to you and Plan It, and your, your work on this has been outstanding as well, so.
Yes.
And recognizing John also is on our committee, and, yeah, Mike's also on the committee, so there's several of us here that have been in all the meetings, and I think it's, it's work well, well done, well, well put together, and I know we've got even electric vehicle pieces in here, we've got water conservation, we've got dense, mixed-density uses. So I think it's a really, really good plan, I think it'll be good for the city for the, at least for the next 10 years. And then we'll, we're obviously gonna have to address the water issue, which we are gonna bring to council, so you're gonna see a, a water resource plan that we are gonna bring forward, which should help, I think, make everybody a little more comfortable in terms of where we're going with our future water needs. Obviously, long-term, Mr. Powell's ideas are, are something obviously that the state needs to look at, but that's a, that's a much bigger picture than, for the city of Casa Grande. Anyway, that's all I have, and I, if you all don't have any more comments, I'm gonna say thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And we'll take a break, and we'll adjourn. Is five minutes enough, you guys? Okay, so we'll start at 7:05.